It's fine.
Okay. I call the city council meeting to order September 24, 2019, at time of 6:03. Finish that. Put your place in place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every justice.
Get us right down. Just through this part.
That's it. So, yeah, agenda update. Oh, roll call. Sorry.
Councilor Weiss.
Here.
Councilor Gionskovich. Councilor Bruber. Councilor Cook.
Here.
Councilor Hatfield. Here. Councilor Missel.
Here.
Councilor Adams.
Present.
Mayor House.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse tonight's absentee's.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, CJ. Absentees excused. And then I have one agenda update. We're gonna have the chief go right after we do the consent agenda here. Consent agenda for the evening is 1-638-6 to 1-6403. And the details as follows. Council paid one amount of $73,483.68. ACH, council paid one amount of $8,753.33. And payroll as of September 20, 2019, about $10,599.07. And the minutes from August 27 and September 10.
Move consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And close. Okay. Then before the executive session, we'll list the change.
Thank you. I'll be real quick. Just for the month of September, we responded to 73 calls of service within sea limits of Roslyn. I looked it up real quick. 642 calls so far this year. The last biggest event that we've had since I've been here was the parade. Councilor Weiss and Mike Woodell and I met prior to the parade. And everything was set up well. I just wondered about it. It all went well, except it was very well attended, which created a pretty big traffic jam. So I was hoping to have an after action review with you and Mike again to discuss some possible options we could do to try and get that a little bit more running a little bit more smoothly for next year.
I was up to it.
Appreciate your thoughts on that, chief.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Oh, we heard there was a ticket issue. This is. For parking. Front of the monitor or anywhere else?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Most time when we down to write the ticket, people come out and move. So pretty effective to stand there. I think I could stand there with this book and people would probably respond.
Close enough.
Yeah. Hopefully with market everything done for the year, we'll have less parking issues.
And we're gonna remove all the snow off the bulbs.
That, we need to, we have to.
Yeah.
Because last year, I called twice for parking on bulbs. And I mean, obviously, you can't ticket something. You can't see a line or a curve. I totally get it, you know.
Yeah, the snow is dripping all over.
But it goes on us.
So we're working on our plan.
Yep.
Good luck with that.
You got a free party? You wanna shuttle some snow?
All right.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
I'm being, just get ahold of me, whatever.
Yeah, we'll do.
Do I officially call an executive session for five minutes, I believe? To discuss the legal matters? Can we talk to the panel?
Yeah.
Oh, we're having a call?
Five minutes?
Yeah. Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Oh. What's your estimate? Fifteen?
I'd say fifteen. Ten to fifteen.
Fifteen minutes?
I'm recording. This is recording now.
Get my hair slapped.
Destroy it? I'll keep it. After we mean whatever. I'll keep it.
You just text it and copy it, do you?
Yeah. You're recording. I'll take the pictures for Facebook.
She'd be great to me.
We are ready.
None of that.
He's preserved.
That's why.
Oh, they're testing the waters, is all they're doing.
This is for the $8,000, just the big deal.
That's about what I'm thinking.
But anyway.
I wrote this for the.
I think the shot, I'll read that. I was just up there watching.
Okay, good. I read it with the likes. I don't see pretty good stuff.
Change is.
Yeah. I'm really not in a hurry to send that off.
Was this for the trees up on the ground trees, the bill?
The beetle kill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the report from that. Yeah, this is.
Okay.
Based on.
Thanks for waiting, boss.
They're gonna make a recommendation of a problem.
What's, who's?
You should have gotten the email. The report from the board.
He's on the app.
I might have, but I haven't got it yet.
Yeah, she sent it off.
I can reset it if you want.
No, I haven't.
I see it.
I was telling him.
I have, I have it. I'll just click at it again. Feel better.
Okay, call the council meeting back in session after executive session ended.
Are you re-recording?
Yep, all good.
Okay, then next, are there any administrative reports? Anybody who wants to do it? Friends in the library, planning?
Quick one? Yeah.
Wait, hold on.
What?
Lynn, you go first. Say your name, please.
Lynn Louise, 407 Roslyn, representing the friends of the Roslyn Library. And I'm sure you're all aware that we have a fundraiser coming up on Saturday. And so we would like all of your support. And we have a question for you. Do you have a status report from Mark?
Marfet is meeting last Thursday with the engineers, from the electrical engineer, the mechanical engineer, and some in the circle. And they were basically revamping what that script of work will be to allot that amount of money. And so they'll get back to us, I mean, Mark, not tomorrow morning, but Thursday morning, here on site. And we'll walk upstairs as we're documenting some things, so we can get to the engineers to continue. Maybe a couple more weeks before we get back with Mark. Get feedback.
Well, we all know where I just remember.
Yep, yep. And I think, I don't think we have, I don't even think that, I think we're last in line. We're really close to getting the grant signed. I don't think we're.
Contract's not signed.
Yeah, they put us to.
The contract is.
Yeah, no, no, no. I think they had put us to the back of the line and that somebody liked the contract.
Well, they may well have, because we were trying to give funds from the friends to the city. We may have gotten pushed to the end of the line. But.
And I did have, I met them, actually, I had Sarah, the little contractor, that was gonna rebuild.
Right, that's on.
Yep, you did see him then. Yep. So I started on that also last week.
Right.
And as soon as we, as soon as we meet with Mark, I'll give you a little bit of update. My thing.
Well, we'll be looking forward to it, because natives are getting restless.
I'm sure they are.
And I think the only native here is me. So, anyway, getting back to the fundraiser. Is anybody interested in asking for donations from folks, the friends, and giving one of these out for a thank you note for them donating?
What kind of donation are you looking for?
Uh, whatever they give.
For like silent auction kind of thing?
No. No, it's just requesting them to make a donation. And when they do, you give them a thank you card. We can't sell these because of problems with, well, it's not a problem, but the liquor license for the distillery with us as a 501(c)(3). You have to be very careful.
I took a pack of tans and I was doing like a 10 or a $20 donation. And so I cleaned out my tan. She gave him to me company.
Can we leave some in the office too?
And cheat timing lots of people in town upon all. I know you have 10 or 20 bucks. You can afford a drink.
Or just sending them to, just saving having to, just trying to think of sending people over to the library when they come in here to make a donation.
So I'll bring you that.
Just a reminder.
Yeah.
Are we out of these?
No. Kathy has 200 more.
I'll take a few. Need to ask?
I would give you a couple today, you should read it.
Uh, whatever.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be by Saturday. I mean, this could continue after. I mean, then people can use them anytime.
Okay. I'm gonna be out of town Saturday, that's why, so I will make sure you get up.
Right.
Okay.
Just for information's sake, we are at 500 at this point.
Okay.
That's all.
Great.
And this is for staff time or for building, for rent?
Rent.
Rent for the libraries during construction.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do what?
Thank you.
Okay. I think that covered everything I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any questions?
Thank you for your effort on this issue.
Well, the person who's really putting work into this is Kathy Craig. I just happened to be here tonight.
You're modest because you're here in Memphis.
Yes.
Time to stretch the joint.
Just a quick one. Yeah, Jennifer, 301 North East Street, planning and spare commission. Just wanted to thank the city for the opportunity for the training that we had like last week or so. I thought that was a really useful and helpful kind of thing. Commissioners would appreciate it. We have a couple commissioners that we have to catch up on it, but they're gonna work on it. We've been doing a subcommittee group on subdivisions. Kathy Cook and Catherine Johnson, I have to say, probably 10 hours, kind of looking at other subdivision codes, looking at our code, trying to modify ours so it's kind of more up to date. Michelle has the draft, and I think the whole commission's gonna look at it next week and it should get to council here within a couple of weeks. I hope, it might go to the lawyer first, but that's been our focus. We're looking forward to working possibly on a dark stat ordinance and updating the accessory dwelling ordinance. So those are our plans for the future, so we'll get back to that.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Right, and on to, I think, unless CAC or cemetery, anybody?
There's, I can just say for the CAC, there's this on the back of the cemetery commission. Just a picture of the kiosks that were donated by the Chamber of Commerce. One's gonna go up by the Alaska Allen Trail. I think the other one slated for up on TNC land. So it's in process, signage.
Okay, then on to our presentation, the phone market, Mark? Mark, you're up.
Thank you.
Right there.
Yeah, we got you.
Two more. Oh, we need one more.
Please. Thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone. Jennifer Lipton, 100 South Fifth Street, Roslyn. And I am here with our board members today, because many of us are here. And we would like to thank you all first to letting us present tonight, but also thanking the city for the opportunity to have our 2019 season, which we are going to recap tonight and let you know a little bit about. We also want to make sure that we thank all the residents, the very wonderful residents and local residents about our market, and obviously, all of the community, including the Cleon and Ronald as well, and the businesses in town, who have been very, very cooperative in all of our experiences of having our market. The businesses have worked with us and they've been excited about having us here, which we'll hear a little bit about. And also to the people on Second Street, so Inland and the other families that were on Second, to help support the mood for Labor Day during the parade. So we're really grateful for all of that transition. And we know and have heard about the impact of the market on town, which we'll talk a little bit about today. So just to give a background, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We have the most of the price of volunteer hours, that are all volunteers. The only salaries that are paid are out to our manager, Lindsay Wheatley. And so Lindsay Wheatley is the manager. And we also have Jen Bode, who is our merchandise representative. We pay her and we pay our high school helpers. And so those are the only individuals that receive salary throughout this whole process of putting this on. We, as a board, are all there often, almost every weekend, if not on alternate weekends or during the time. So this is all just very much a voluntary, community-oriented thing that we put on. So just wanted to give an idea about some of the market. So we had, as a result of the bump outs this year, we had to reduce our numbers for the numbers of booths that we have because of the constraint of the booths. So we are down to what had, it's not down, it's still a very high number of booth spaces, of about 85 booth spaces. We're also able to cooperate with the owners of what have been Harpers to use some of the Harper's yard area for any overflow that we have, which was wonderful. So of the vendors that were there, we have about 103 active vendors that all, we had to decline a lot because we had gotten a lot of people from around the state who have heard about the market and have a great interest in being here, because they understand what a great market it is and how well it's run. And so we get, we get applications from all over the state to participate in the market. And we've turned about 18 or more away at the beginning of the season and throughout the season. On average, we have about 67 vendors that can fill up those 85 spaces. Some had double booth spaces. And so we, and most of those days, we have full allotment of those 85 spaces. And I think it's really important to know that of those people, 67 vendors on average, 33 of them are from upper county. That means that there are 33 individual, non-brick-and-mortar businesses that are active on the street, making money over 14 days in the summertime. And these are registered businesses. We do take their business license. And so as registered businesses, they have to go through the whole business license process that has to allocate any funds that they make, which over those 14 dates, there's about $350,000 that we see transferred over to vendors on the street. That's what from our keeping notes anonymous vendor input on how much is made after each market. That's what we have as a sum, $350,000. And so each of those vendors who is active as part of their business license, they have to provide some of that information. They have to document that that is happening here in Roslyn. So we want to make sure that that's known. And so we, we want to just kind of highlight that importance of the market as an economic engine, that it is not just the brick-and-mortar businesses that we have limited space for in Roslyn. It is all of these independent entrepreneurial businesses that are active and from our community. So you're going to hear a little bit more about our budget and about what happened from Sky here.
Hey, Sky Stoff. Still don't remember my parents' addresses. But I reside in Shoreland. So thanks, Jen, and thanks to the council for seeing us. About four months ago, we presented the first time, and I shared some of the findings from the consulting review that I did. Shared plans for boosting farmer sales, which included initiating booth stamps, which we have done. Next year, we're hoping to get more steam behind that program. Conducted the business surveys where we spoke with all of the business owners that have retail spaces on Pennsylvania, in which they shared unanimous support for the market, with parking being the big, the big issue that we talked about. We shared about the growth of the market, coming from 1,500 to 3,200 weekly customers between 2013 and 2018. And at that point, our record was 4,500. And this year, we broke that record and hit 5,100 on Labor Day this year. So we had over 5,000 people on that street in those four hours. Then we spoke a little bit about the budget as well. At that time, our account balance was lower than it had ever been going into a season. So we were all really concerned about that. We projected our revenue expense and expenses at a $6,000 deficit. So we were kind of strapped at that point. We were thinking that we would get about $48,000 only from our booth fees and merge sales, with projected expenses at $54,000. So we were gonna seek that outstanding amount from outside sources like sponsorships and grants. So now that we've done the season, we got the numbers, the numbers are in. Our revenues actually ended up being 46, and that did include about 5,000 usable grant money from Sankadia as well as, with Sankadia, what is it?
Honfu Canadian.
And then the RDA also gave us some money.
That 5,000 total?
It was, I believe, the total amount that was granted was seven something? But 23 was, we didn't use, was unusable because we didn't, it was for things that we didn't do.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll be, that money is basically in limbo and not reflected on these numbers.
Yeah.
And then, so this was lower, I mean, it did include some grants, and it was lower than we were expecting without grants. So this was largely due to less than expected booth fee revenues, which is a combination of just vendor fluctuation from year to year, as well as losing some of those spaces with the bump outs. And then our expenses ended up being 43,000, which was, we all kind of breathed a breath of fresh air after we, you know, made it through the season. Some of our big expense items are our labor, our live music. We bring musicians from all over the state and sometimes all over the country to play. About $6,000 merchandise, which is pretty much a wash when we calculate the revenues from that. And then we, this year, we had the new expense, the city, for services like trash and staff time, we're dealing with those things. So we were pleased to have lower expenses this year than we projected. And that was due to some frugal spending in a few areas. We cut our advertising budget by half, relying more heavily on word of mouth and reputation this year, which seemed to look fine. The attendance was still up, you know, it's a part. Our, we didn't have as many need for outside services beyond our internal staff this year. We were planning on hiring an admin person, which didn't happen. And there were no big equipment investments, as well as no unforeseen expenses like having to close for a fire danger. So it was a good year financially for us in terms of not breaking the bank. So we're returned to a healthy account balance. We feel ready to move into 2020, better, readiness than we were last year. But we still don't have a lot of wiggle room for additional, you know, there is some wiggle room, but not a lot of wiggle room for any, you know, unforeseen charges. And, but we're ready to work with the city to address any concerns that it has, and so that we can continue offering local food and crafts and serving as a tourism, you know, between 3,000 and 5,000 people or streets. And that, Mark, is gonna take us out.
Well, Mark, 301 North East Street. So before the start of the season, we gave a presentation of this city and explained in terms of the vendors we've already set. But we do want to request, assuming that we announce one of our board members, meet with the admin committee to discuss next year's finances, so that neither the city, the market, nor the vendors have surprises, so that we can start the year with, you know, everybody clear on costs and fees and whatever. So we're ready to work with the city to pay an appropriate event fee and for your direct city services revenues. However, we did want to address a number of other things. There have been comments made online and elsewhere that the market has gotten away without paying our fair share or taking advantage of the city, or somehow profiting at the expense of the city in our presentation phase apart to address those rumors. So as Jen noted, while the market provides some paid employment, most of us are volunteers. We're not making money off the market. We're doing it because it provides a service to the community. And while there are difficulties because of the market, I mean, parking, it does increase the city's parking challenges, but parking difficulties are not solely due to the market, as anyone who tries to park downtown on Saturday can testify. We bring many people to town, which helps local businesses and helps provide a robust and thriving downtown to all residents. There was also this year some controversy on social media from some who suggested that the market moved to run you parking. And I take this opportunity to address that. The idea has been raised with us before, and we have seriously considered it. However, there's a number of, you know, that rescue reality thing. We have, as you said, you know, up to 85 booths every weekend, 65 vendors, that's at least 65 or 70 vehicles, who loan and unload every market. We have an average of 75 vendors per market and two vehicle trips per booth. That means that would be 2,100 vehicle incursions into the park, which would pose a danger to the sod and to the sprinkler system. Additionally, there would be the impact of 3,000 or 4,000 more people every market marching around on the, on the park. We estimate this year the total number of attendance, not the total number of people, because some people come every weekend, but the total number of visits is approaching 50,000 visits a season. We also note that moving would not offer a real solution to the parking issues. It would just move the congestion through blocks. And such a move would also have the unintended consequence of taking all those people away from the downtown businesses, which is one of the reasons why we picked up the market when Jeanine started to close, you know, felt she had to close it, was because that's a lot of traffic for our local businesses. And if we move them, people will come to the market and then leave, and they won't be walking around downtown while we do that. Finally, right now, the market has to leave once a season to accommodate the Labor Day play. If we move to the park, we have to move at least for the vintage trailer show and for the long show, and that would also impact picnics or whatever else anybody wanted to do in the park on Sundays. We feel that, while we understand the impetus for the suggestion that it's not a practical solution. Another thing that people often suggested to us is that we have a longer season, and there are significant reasons why we have decided not to do that. First, if we started earlier, there would not be much fresh produce available. So it's, you know, it'd be a craft market, not a farmer's market. On the other end, if we extend it into the fall, the weather becomes unpredictable, the number of attendees falls, which would make the market less attractive to vendors. And also, the number of people who come to the market falls, because there's, sometimes there's dams. Lastly, since many of us are volunteers, we get burned out. Right now, it's sustainable, it's manageable. We like to do it. We're glad when it's done, and we miss it after it's been gone for a few months. But if it's, becomes burdensome, we can't, we'll make endless time. So the market, as currently structured, is sustainable. We divide balance of placement, composition cost, and length of season. Our nonprofit volunteer board built on the model started by Jeanine Collins, which utilizes the great setting of Roslyn, uses the market as an inducement to bring people to town, provides sustainable, fresh food to locals and visitors, offers local crafters a place to sell their wares, and it helps to bring people to local businesses. We sought to create a model that was sustainable, oriented to the community, and not dependent on any one person. We've created, we think, a virtuous cycle. The vendors are happy, they tell other vendors. We have, we have to go out and recruit vendors. We have more than we could use. And that's because the vendors that we have are happy with it. They don't have to pay too much, and they have lots of customers. The local crafters have an outlook, outlet for their goods. The mix of farmers, foods, processors, crafters is an enticing mix. And the market organization through our booth fees can cover costs, though sometimes we do need the help of grants. As we have grown, we've also provided a four-hour live music festival in every market Sunday. And this balance of all of these elements has worked well, with more vendors and more attendees every year, growing not only the market, but Roslyn's reputation and attraction. You notice sometimes the announcements of, you know, places, good places to go, talk about Roslyn, and then the historic nature of it and the feel of the town, and some of them mention the market as one of the most attractive in the state. But this virtuous cycle could become a downward spiral. Vendors felt they were being charged too much, and we had fewer, and then. Vendors felt they were being charged too much and we had fewer and then attendees don't come and then we don't have the money to pay the musicians. So we wanna keep it on that upward spiral. Um, so we wanted, we note that there are the two city decisions that have impacted the market. One, the sidewalk project bump outs decreased our potential booth space, hence our potential revenue from booth fees. And two, when the state shifted its procedures, the city declined to keep accepting city business licenses from vendors. That's something we've required since we understood the impact on the city and that brought in several thousand dollars of income to the city. And that decrease in city income was a city decision, not a market decision. So we want to, we stand ready to work with the city to pay our, for actual city costs related to the market. Um, but some people seem to feel that because the market is successful for attendees and vendors and downtown businesses, we must give all the money. And that is not a reflection of reality. Uh, we cover our expenses and this year we have generous grants from both the RDA and the Senate to fund for community advancement. So we are continuing to be committed to keeping the market, to keeping that virtuous cycle going up and to paying our fair share to the city and to continuing to build the quality reputation and our positive contribution to Roslyn.
Questions?
I have a couple. Can you, I, I would never quite track what you were saying about the city business licenses? Because I know that there's a change at the state level, which the city does not control.
So we originally, we were the ones that asked our vendors to buy city license, business license. And, um, we did that knowing that that would bring in revenue to the city in some way, especially all this. So we had, we were the, it was not anything we had to do. We did it and we were told last year to not do it because it was a burden, um, to process those. And because probably the Bureau of Labor, um, procedures that the city opted out of to do the online streamlined, uh, process of the business license.
So I didn't realize we had a choice in that.
No, we didn't have a choice. The, the state changed it, so if you do under two thousand dollars with a business, we can't force them to get a business license in the city.
So it, it was in the Bureau of Labor statistics that said cities that opted out in Roslyn business license, so.
Opted out of the online?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. We didn't, we didn't participate in the online, so they can buy a business license. But they still don't have to buy it if they do less than two thousand dollars with a business in the city. So that's just the state. We were required to adopt, or adopt a new ordinance that excluded anything under two thousand dollars from having to obtain. That was a state requirement, we didn't have a choice.
Based on imported department revenue.
And then, okay, two other questions.
Well, could, could an outside entity require it? Like, the city doesn't, can't require it, but could the market?
We can't, by state law, we're not allowed to require a business license for anyone that does business and doesn't have a permanent address in the city limits. So.
I like Scott saying, can you, can the board, can the farmer's market board enforce that?
That's what we, we did initiate it as, not even like consulting.
It comes back to the same thing.
Just as like a policy for, to be a member.
Yes.
As a, yeah.
And to bring in their, like, four thousand, five thousand dollars.
Yeah, sales tax.
Maybe it goes back to the state, but none of it goes back to us?
No, just the license fee.
Just the license fee.
The license fee, but we can't legally, I mean, you could require whatever you want, but you can't force them. I mean, nobody can force them to buy it if the state law doesn't.
We, we, we did, as a board, we, we requested them to buy it to participate in our market and the city of Roslyn.
Right, I understand that, but I guess what I'm getting at is when, when they come to the doors, we can't force, I can't force them to buy it. So I have, I mean, our ordinance says if you do under two thousand dollars with a business, you don't have to buy one in the city limits.
Right, but our vendor policy was that they should, they had to buy the city business license.
But you can't do that, that's just not a thing anymore.
Well, that's what we were told.
We were told that we couldn't do that.
It sounds like we can't, we just can't sell it. We, when they come in, they just hopefully hand the money over and get the business license. We can't say.
Yeah, if they just buy one, then, then that's fine, but they, they're not required to as the, as the thing.
No, no, we require it for being a participant in the market. That's what, that's what it has always been, is that we, as a board, and as, um, as having participation in the Roslyn Farmer's Market as a vendor, we required them to have a city business.
Right, yeah, I understand. It's just on the, right on the top of our business license, it says if you do under two thousand dollars, because it's the RCW. So as soon as they read that, so now it's conflicting, it's a policy.
If they don't wanna pay, then they don't.
Then they don't.
Yeah, you just don't.
So that, I mean, you guys can have whatever policy you want, I just can't.
Then they can't be vendors in our market and then they can't sell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's where it was like, so, okay. Yeah, I mean, this is getting, I was just trying to.
Continue your message, yes.
Yeah.
Continue your message, that's what you should do.
Sounds like a positive message you guys have going on right now.
That wasn't a negative, yeah.
My other questions were just if your booth fees, if you research, if they're to measure it with similarly popular markets? And your considerations for next year?
Yeah, um, our booth fees are right in line. I think they're, I did this research last year and I don't have numbers entirely, but if I remember, we were slightly above Ellensburg. Slight, and then right on par with, um, Minachi and Edmonds. I, I looked at it, six of them. Then there's ones like Ballard, Minachi, like the colossal giants that charge on a percent.
But also maybe our market vendors aren't necessarily the ones that are also going.
Some of them, but most of them not, yeah.
So our booth fees, though, um, we don't charge our membership. Um, some other markets charge membership as well as requiring the business license. Ellensburg requires city, like, business license and, um, the regular booth fees. So because we do not do that, business license is just straight booth fees and that is, that'll be paid. So it was actually, it somewhat equates to Ellensburg and the amount like what we have to two, like, five thousand.
This was an ask, are you gonna increase it like five dollars every year as just cost of living or the reason, no?
Oh, no, we don't have, we've increased it once.
And so you pay thirty dollars right now, is that correct?
Farmers.
For the farmer's market? And they pay that every weekend they show up as thirty dollars?
Um, they pay it only if, thirty is if they pay at the beginning of the season for all fourteen.
Okay, it's like a prepaid discount.
Thirty-five if they are paying per day and then crafters pay, uh, forty.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I was just looking at the five dollars at eighty-five per session, roughly four hundred bucks, let's say, times thirteen sessions, you know, that's two thousand bucks extra in your, in your fees. And that's why if you look at your business plan, just sort of figuring out where your numbers are tight and how you can include those, um, by putting it on your, you know, putting it on the vendors.
Well, we, we, we were sort of requiring the city business fee, we lost some vendors.
And now, but they haven't been doing it this year, right? They didn't do any biz- business license fees, right?
So when did you start requiring the business license?
Almost three years ago. We did it for two years.
And then this year you stopped?
We stopped because we were told not to anymore.
Right.
And I thought that that was, you know, I think.
They're effectively saving that fifty dollars away from it.
Yeah, through, through the whole length of the season. But that same year, we, the year, uh, it was a year that we recently realized prices.
Yeah.
Have you thought about reapplying for tax rush money? For, um, can we, can they do that in your status? And the reason I ask is it's a lot more money and, um, and.
Different process.
You tracked out of town, that's, you're such a no-brainer. I mean, I was on tax law at the G M, it's a no-brainer where you guys stand right now bringing people in. That I would think you can get a ten thousand dollar, fifteen thousand dollar.
If you recall from those meetings when we did apply, we could not prove how many beds and beds we put.
But you seem to have done a lot better job, though, the past couple of years of doing that.
We stopped and two years ago, we.
Well, I remember one year with the laptop things debacle.
We, we lost money.
But I'm asking, just in general, have you thought about reapplying and reapproaching it with a different layout, a different format they have?
Yes, if, we're not gonna do it. That's, that's, it's just not.
Okay, I'm just asking, it's a chunk of money, that's why I ask, that you can get, it takes work, but it's, it's that, it's there.
I think it's because we had, I think, two years where we lost money because we were denied what we had documentation for. Um, and they, and so we just said, you know what, we don't want to take that risk. We have everything supporting our, our funding plan and they, they didn't accept it. And so whatever happened, we had phone meetings afterwards to try to claim like three thousand dollars and that was.
Was that the?
That was, you weren't in that.
I wasn't on that course.
Yeah. It's, it's a sad thing, it should be possible, but it's.
That was prior to me getting there or now.
It's a lot of work. Oh, I'm sorry.
It is a lot of work.
Just one last comment, we don't have to really discuss it, it's just for, uh, one year it was on Washington Street for one or two. And just throwing that out there as a citizen comment, of course.
A couple of problems. One is now there's a hotel, so that changes it. The other problem is that the street, uh, has a bigger hit to it, so the, uh, the tables didn't work.
Everybody loved that, that spot. It, it actually had a limited, we had a reduced number of races.
Lose everybody.
Oh, boy.
Ask the market manager if he dumped all the vendors.
You have an empty lot.
I had a lot of people that I know, um, the businesses that work at, um, the street, like, the Eagles and, um, and Marshall's. Love to have it there.
They have this hotel, it makes a negative impact.
They use that field.
Yeah. They packed a bunch of trains.
Yeah, they use that, what a hotel is, was it?
It was empty lot at that time.
I see, okay.
The, the situation with the city business licenses that we talked about for a minute, uh, that was an ex- that was an attempt that we made to try and infuse some cash into the city's accounts.
Right.
But it seemed like, uh, well, then this year, it seemed like, you know, that was a decision that we made without collaborating with the city. And then it kind of came out that it was actually making more work for the city and it was worth to receive those funds. At least that's what, what was communicated. So I think what needs to happen is, there is a lot of money flying around on the, on the street. So if we can all work together to figure out a way, it makes sense to channel some of those dollars back to the city.
And I do wanna go to a couple of board meetings and those are the exact kind of topics.
Sure.
Right.
So that we're not creating something that makes it so that the market can't carry on? Or something that makes it so that the vendors can't justify coming out? There's gotta be a solution.
Well, I had a concern, because there's a lot of cash sales, I mean, ninety percent cash sales, maybe, maybe more. And, and for me, I, I'm, I'm looking at loss in sales tax off of that. If they're not kept, if they're doing so many cash sales, how honest are they being on their books for their businesses and to capture those sales? I mean, that's a huge loss for us. And I think roughly there's thirty thousand dollars a market, forty thousand dollars a market. Um, the voters in the paper, something like that, right? So you start looking at that yet a thirteen times. I wanna know how we're capturing that sales in our town. And, and that's important to me, because it is an impact, not just on me or the residents, but that money should be here. And so that's a concern of mine on how we can, how that gets back to us, um, because it is our space. And, and so that's something that is a concern for me and how they're doing their businesses and how, I mean, I don't know there's a lot you can do about it because they have your independent businesses, but, um, that, that's something for me that's probably been the biggest concern is washing the cash sales. And, um, is it being reported properly and are we getting a difference in return? Are we, what are we capturing out of those cash sales tax, out of those cash sales?
I will say in your defense, any cash sales business is difficult to deal with. I'll give you a great example. There's a car washed down in Clayton. Do they report all the quarters that go in that machine? There's not a receipt for it. Anytime you're in the cash business, whether it's a bar or a restaurant, a farmer's market, you, you can't capture them all. It's a unique problem and it's not unique to you. So, I do wanna make two comments now. Number one, I really appreciate all your help. Off the market was the best one I've been to yet this season. Enjoy the headcount. Guys do a phenomenal job. I do also back you staying where you're at in a big way. Our park can't take that kind of usage. If you look at just the Roslyn yard, which has started out season being abusible, some green grass. It took its beating on those weekends too. And I don't think we can do that to our park and we have enough other events coming down there. And all you're doing, as you stated, is moving a parking problem from the downtown area to a residential area, which doesn't have as big a streets. So I'm not in favor of moving it anywhere from where it's at right now. And the businesses I know did profit from the market being there. Ask any one of the business owners downtown. They were thrilled with it. Great weather for it, it's a great job. Thank you very much for your time and, and the effort you put into it.
I would like to, I agree completely with that, the best analysis myself. What was offered, though, was, uh, after the city admin committee worked out the details. So my question is honestly, what kind of timeframe do you need to have that?
Um, well, we, we start at the beginning of the year plan, we make our plans for the year and long about, um, March or April, we send out to the businesses, to the vendors, here's what we're gonna charge this year, here's changes in rules, there's, you know, changes in policies and procedures. So we, we have to have it before then, before they start applying.
So decision by March, pretty much.
Yeah, actually, it would be better for any budget planning that we might need to do to start it as sooner rather than later because we might need to look for other types of funds and to help support whatever plans that come out. So I would prefer doing it before January so that things that are being disseminated out, um, could be, be kind of set. And if we have to raise ender prices or we need to do membership, we need to search the background because that needs to be out by March one and less timeframe. So having it sooner rather than later in the, like, winter quarter would be best.
Well, you know, I'll be honest with you, the, the, the budget season is upon us and a lot of our time is taken up with that. However, I do appreciate the, the point about how, you know, starting, knowing where you're starting, you know, start your planning is helpful. I also appreciate the fact that if we wait until January, a lot of this discussion has to happen again because of the people up there. It may take us several meetings to come to a agreement, that's possible. So there might, there probably should be some time factor there for that.
It sounded like you didn't end your sentence.
End of my sentence is, we need, uh, I, I would like to think of, of date tonight.
You're looking at before the New Year, correct?
Yes, 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 I think so. So that, so that we can all plan and be prepared and, and start that conversation. I'd rather start it a little earlier, you know, rather than at the last minute, because.
Yeah, late October sounds good and then you have November.
And then we get through budget and we have a week towards the end of Christmas and then again.
October, can you be ready the first, the second Tuesday or do you need the fourth Tuesday?
I, we don't need time to prepare to sit down and have a minister discussion. And when the time will have some part where you're gonna show up.
In terms of the budget process, um, this, this discussion's probably gonna take an hour, probably take the whole meeting, honestly. So, in turn, you know, what was staff planning on the budget process? What is it, the, the second Tuesday or the fourth Tuesday is a better one?
Second Tuesday will be the, uh, the amendment.
The eighth or the twenty-second.
Yeah, so. So what, what is the, what is the best for staff one is?
October twenty-second.
Is that acceptable to you folks? October twenty-second, it is, like, five o'clock here, a dedicated meeting for that purpose.
Would you rather do it at four and then have budget planning after that?
I accept that, and then four o'clock is acceptable to you folks?
You're gonna have to do four because you've got public works at five.
Four thirty.
Yeah, we'll do four thirty on the twenty-second.
Another meeting at five.
It's a public works.
What's a public works?
Public works.
I do my public works meeting.
Okay, let's do that. Let's have five o'clock for the market board, four o'clock for the admin meeting with a budget discussion.
At four we'll do budget.
Five o'clock market on the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second.
Um, what would you like to have to prepare? Should we, should we prepare?
Just sort of your cost of what you, Jim, sort of what you bring today. I mean, I think, I don't think you're far off of what you need. I mean, I really think it's just discussing whether your fees are and so forth and what we, what we can make work for everybody.
I wanna discuss the business license thing too.
Yeah, and the business license. Yeah, I mean, I think that's really it and it's just getting to a point that we can keep the market going and everybody making the, this city business fees covered and, um, so we're not losing money and then we get going.
I'm sure it's been brought in a couple of years and Catherine and I were vendors, I think it's a really good. But what about the street over here? Does that ever come up in board meetings?
We can set up another meeting, you talk about location.
Well, I'm just, it's all, it's all.
The only, the only time it came up was.
Yeah, because the end place apartments and emergency.
No, 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 I'm talking about the road immediately here.
Right here, behind.
Oh, I understand now.
It, it came up, uh, when you suggested we might try that rather than reading to Washington or Second Avenue. However, that's the route that the VT work goes.
Yeah, the free. Yeah, the free.
But that's one weekend.
Well, I'll just tell you right now, Chief has a different plan, as of her, so. Get it on the table for you guys to think about.
We'll meet with Chief before too, and we'll, hopefully with Jeff Ab as well, and we'll talk more.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Now that you brought that up, in our storefront meeting last week, that was actually one of the things Jim Naples had drawn up in one of his books, that was just part of a quick discussion. It wasn't about moving the market or anything, but I had not seen that. And it, the way it was presented was, was really cool. It obviously contributed to probably the area that's not ours, which is in K D land, but it was just sort of a neat format. Might be another idea for an alternate if it's not a change, but it would be something to look at. And I think everybody just opened in the discussion of throwing ideas out, so everybody's on the same.
At least before March. Throw it all out there.
October twenty second is about the rules for the market, and not about location.
We're not gonna hand real location or things like that.
So I have a couple of things, I, I love market, I love where it's at. You guys volunteer everything, Lindsay kicks butt, you guys all do an awesome job, so keep up the great work, even when it gets really stressful. But my biggest, my two complaints, which I hate to be a complainer, because nobody likes a complainer, is pedestrian safety across the nine oh three, that has to be, I believe, addressed in the near future, because it's a city's liability, but it's reflecting on a cause from what's, what you guys are putting on the street. But it all comes down on the city's shoulders if a kid, or a person, or anybody gets hit, because the traffic is, we all know is horrible on nine oh three. And it's getting worse on Second Street, but we need to address the nine oh three traffic. If it's putting up flags, if it's putting up a sign that tells pedestrians to be smart and look both ways, just something that we can, we, we know that washed up with those signs up for, for cars, but it's, it's just, anytime that's, we know it's gonna happen, and it's the city's liability. And I want to just try to be, any way that we can prevent that. So that's one.
Crossing guard.
Yeah, if it's paying a crossing guard, which is an extent out there, because then it's more on your guys' budget and so forth, but that's maybe where fees are escalated because of that. But then my other, my other thing is, is cleaning. After the market, it always seems like our downtown is just left a little messier than how, how it was left, or how it was when people got onto the market. Like, you have the food vendors that spill out their grease, you have the kettle corns that have their, their popcorn mess, and you might say no, but you look on the side of our building where we let the food market go, and I have grease spot across my door and across the back of my building. And if you look still in front of Harper's, there is big grease spots. And so it's not, I'm not suggesting cleaning every week, but maybe in the middle of the, the middle of the summer, do a, a downtown pressure wash or a clean, and then at the end of the year, do a downtown pressure wash and a clean. Just because it really definitely, I think, looks, Sunday afternoon, Monday morning, it looks kind of gross. And that's just, and maybe gross is a little stretch, but it's, it definitely could look a lot nicer for our downtown.
We started to, towards the end of the market, was trying to make sure that we were out there sweeping, and the minions were out there at least sweeping off the street, which, you know, probably lasted like ten minutes with all the wins this summer. But at least it was like picking up some of the popcorn and the corn husks and the residue that was left behind. But, but there is, that would, I think that's a good.
And again, not to be a complainer, it's, you guys are doing an awesome job. It's just one of the two little things I could see different from the market.
And that's a tough one.
Yeah.
We, you know, every year we try and clamp down the vendors a little bit harder, like especially with food, because it's really messy, with their grease disposal and, and leaving, you know, and from a management perspective, like you said, Lindsay kicks butt, it's hard to get them to like actually.
Act it, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, we should be constantly exploring ways to improve that.
Enforce it, because I think we actually had created a policy where they had to bring cardboard under any grease item. And there's no disposal that goes into the stream, and they had to carry out all of their boxes and their trash and things, but I don't know how we are good, because it gets so busy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The only other suggestion I have, this was not from you, it was from somebody else, but, and I, I actually agree with it. When we started talking about like a crossing guard of some sort, is somebody here at this building, as you come into town, about directing parking, of getting people down this street, and, and maybe a volunteer there actually trying to coordinate the parking, because it becomes a conundrum of cars, you know, back, nobody's really has any system to it, right? It's just a free for all. But I think it would, it would help a little bit of the impact parking if we were directing people with, you drive past and the signs are not always where it needs to be, I think, it's not very visual, so if there's somebody there actually making people go into the mar, market parking and directing them down this way, and then maybe a volunteer trying to structure some form of parking, like, hey, we're gonna line them up this way, and then let's try to create rows, just, just trying to help a few things that I think would help with parking scenarios.
Yeah, if it's managed.
A little bit of management, I think, could go a long ways. Yeah, I just think a little bit of management could go a long ways. I don't know that you have the volunteers, but it's a lot of weekends, I mean, I get it. It's, you need a volunteer for probably six hours, not four, right? Prior and after.
Like, as of now, we don't, but you can get some more.
Yeah, it's just a thought, it was just a suggestion, I said I would bring it up, so I.
So on, on that, uh, we do, we, and yes, they sometimes aren't out right away, but we do have parking signs pointing this way.
Yeah, no, I've seen the signs, but I think a physical person is needed.
Yeah, and then I park my truck there in the parking lot, like, to start the first row, so.
You're the only one that follows the direction.
And then, but it is, like, I can show you cam footage, that if I park my truck there, people will follow along and then do another row. So.
No, but I, I think your parking could be consolidated significantly better with a volunteer. You know, an, an orange vest and a, a couple of red, red gloves, or orange flags, and you could, and I think you might be surprised, you might get tips out of things like that. Maybe have somebody with a little Roku machine riding people to the market. Why not? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time and energy.
For that, the meeting on the twenty second, your staff have a break, you know, your position on how long this license field thing is. For our discussion.
I don't know if it was so much onerous, other than the fact that we just can't, like, we can't institute a policy to require them, yeah.
We're gonna let go of that, right, they're, they're gonna make a requirement for us.
Yeah, I just, I don't know how that will work.
Is that, is that the?
Yeah, yeah.
Look, look, the bummer was, they wanted the online service, and I get it, the online service is the only, is efficient, right? So there's.
By two thousand twenty-two, it'll be on, everybody has.
So, I mean, I think that was their biggest statement, they just didn't have it online.
So transition, here, this is. Okay, good, okay. I just didn't want to create a situation that was, that was difficult for staff.
Yeah, no, I think it was just that we just couldn't enforce that at that point.
Great conversation. Okay, a couple new business items. The bottom line here is, our commissions and committees have different amounts of years.
Yeah.
And, and then there's a lot of turnover.
Yes.
Having someone, one of them's four, one of them's six, and then one of them's two, so I want to make all of them change.
Yep, there's a change, I think that makes sense.
And then they expire alternating years, so you don't have the whole commission expire.
No, I think that's exactly what you should do, I think that's a great, great, great idea.
And that way, you know, people can. It just allows the, the term, people quitting.
Yeah, I like that idea.
I'll make a motion to approve the municipal commission section, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
To the, relating to the membership on the planning and historical reservation commission.
I'll second.
More discussion?
Yeah, are we requiring current members to reapply for their position each year? Because I don't think that's right.
Well, after their two years.
After their term is up, they reapply, at the end of their term.
Yeah, just like what we do.
We have never done that in the past. That is not true. We've never done that in the past.
Never reapply, except for when I, my term ended and I.
Yeah, when the term ends.
Right, but, but when the term ended and I, I was no longer commissioner, I had to reapply, but prior to the time before it was like, do you want to continue? Yes, I never, I always filled out a form ten years ago.
I've never seen, I've never seen a commission, a commission member write, I need to reapply until this year.
See the cemetery, they.
Never, that's wrong, that's wrong, we shouldn't be doing that.
Well, we reapply every time, we have to do a term limit. Like, I do it every two years, I pay my thirty-five dollars, and I go down to Ellensburg and do it every single.
The mayor can kick you off a commission any freaking time he wants, he can't do that for you. That's the difference. That's the difference.
Well, so, then why, then I guess, I mean, if we do that, then we don't need terms at all.
Oh, yeah, why do we have terms?
I'm finally cleaning up the different numbers and the rotating, whatever. I'm just saying, when a person has been participating in the commission, desires to continue, that person should not be required to go through the paperwork of reapplying, that's, that's wrong, that's wrong.
Could we dumb down the paperwork where it just says, do you want to reapply or not?
But it shouldn't be open to other new members.
But yeah, 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 you should.
You're not giving other people the opportunity.
We don't have the situation where people are fighting. That is not occurring.
But we hope to, we want that, we want that, we want that encouragement of other people to come and, and be their part of it. Like, we can't limit that.
Well, hoping doesn't make it reality, the reality is that they don't flock into that, you know, I mean, seriously. I mean, I, I'd love that too, but that is not the situation that we live in. And what we live in is people desire, have investment, can want to continue, I think they should be allowed to continue. Unless, of course, there's a reason to remove that person. And that is, the reason to remove that person is the only reason you should be removed from us, from a commission that you are performing and, and cooperating on. Now, if the situation changes and there are a hundred people for the position, we can have the discussion again. But I, I don't think I'm gonna live long enough for that to be a problem for the city of Roslin. Frank.
So would there not be term?
I'm, this is an administrative thing, this is an administrative thing, I'm just saying.
I'm just trying to figure out what it means, and if, what's, there is, what's a, what defines a term if there's no application?
There's no end.
Or there's no end to it, then, it's just like, oh, I want to keep being a volunteer. Okay, I decided I'm done volunteering, now you have a position open.
Which is how it happens now.
Or.
Yes. Yes.
I don't know, I don't think it's that big of a deal for, to have somebody reapply every, every time.
All I know is that I have had complaints from people who sit on commissions, who say, I've been on the commission for many years, I'm participating at a level that other people are unable to participate in. Why do they have to go through the big form to be redone? Because, you know, frankly, we know that person already, we know everything about that person. We know how they operate, we know how they cooperate, we know what their ideas are. So there's really no reason to put them through the same thing as if they were brand new. Now, if there are, you know, ten people for that same position, okay, maybe we would, we'd look at that, but I don't see that.
Or just one other, or just one other person. When this term goes up in two years, that gives the other person that's sitting next to that commissioner chair, their time to maybe step up and say, you know what, I'm gonna put this, my name in the hat. I know they have to put their name in the hat, so I'm gonna put my name in the hat too. So then it actually is a choice there, not every year, I know I'm gonna get in.
If there is competition, fine, if there is not competition, it seems silly to me.
But there is competition right now in the cemetery commission.
All right, but when was the last time you had competition on the CAC committee, for example? Never, never, okay, so, so why should that person who has no competition be required to, 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 to apply? As if they were a beginner, this is, this is, this is not right. No, I agree with what you're saying, because in theory, their application is already on file. So. We're more than that, we know everything about them, we've been watching them perform. So I agree with that, I mean, why, they don't have to fill it out. Thank you, that's all I'm asking for, otherwise, I'm, I'm fine with this, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's fine, then you can keep the file and record.
But, but there needs to be some mechanism where, when a term is over for a position, that if that person wants to continue being in that position, there needs to be some communication of that.
So we would, so we would publicly announce every time there's people up. And if somebody else wants to play, they can, and then the people that want it just say, I'm, my, I'm on file. You do that simply in the water bill, or in the notice of that process? Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And then that puts the onus on the people that may want a seat. To actually do something.
Actually do.
Or could there be a just the application?
So that you will be assertive about your seat transition.
And the sitting person already has an application on file.
Yeah, I don't know that they've ever been required, like, the reappointments weren't necessarily required, they were.
They filled out hers, she's better than that.
Well, they could, but they could just give a letter of interest saying they wanted to be reappointed as well, didn't necessarily have to do the application.
She told me she was required to fill that out in the magazines.
Is it a big application?
No, it's one sheet.
Is there a way to put on there, like, instead of filling it all out again with all the personal information, like a checkbox, that's like, I'm reapplying for my current position?
An email.
An email works, I mean, yeah, just some, a letter of interest or.
Something that, I don't know if it goes in the code or where it goes, that it's a policy or what, that to capture that, you have to be proactive.
I mean, we have new people that don't fill it out, they just do a letter of interest.
Which sounds so acceptable.
Yeah, which is, yeah.
First of all, it's too open.
So then, do we need to change, we've just changed the application?
It's a ministry.
Okay. But the wording in here is.
Yeah, because that's just, we just have been advertising them, and then they either do a letter of interest, or they refill out the application.
Isn't there something about residency, is, is that? There's no change.
We didn't change any of that.
All three of them require it, except for the planning of historic preservation for people to have the work of history. If we don't have somebody else in that cemetery. If we already have an architect, we can't have an architect from Ellensburg. If there were none, then we need it.
Then we could, yeah.
If it fit, if it fit our profile of what we're looking for.
You said the cemetery commission?
No.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No, cemetery and CAC both are.
All right, yeah, okay.
Well, and they're written too, except for the, the two athletic positions.
Gotcha, yeah.
Okay, I'm good. Hope you're listening to that.
This motion is still in.
Yeah, do we need a motion?
No, we made a motion, we took a second.
Okay, so all in favor of the two years, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we need to do it again?
We need to do it one more time.
I'll make a motion amending Roslin, use of quote, section eighteen dot fifteen dot zero eight zero, relating to membership of the cemetery commission.
I'll second.
This is also for two years, long as they're say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, once we do any citizen comments, unless.
Well, I, I just haven't, I haven't, since it's come from years, because she wasn't able to come here, so I've got a truck date, and it's a letter that council was given, if I made a mistake, I'm also losing my voice, so. Janie Robine, through North B Street, on behalf of Lee Beersley, and I'm just gonna read part of it, it's a rather long story, and I wouldn't ask you to read it, but you're pleasure here. And it is a topic that's dear to me as well, so. Design review has played a pivotal role in maintaining Roslin's historic integrity. It was a major tool in filtering out strip malls, inappropriate development, and modern designs. With this time of increased pressure, the council must not recognize that design review must be strengthened. The council's, council's recent code change allowing the mayor to withdraw from design review from the RPHC vows to pressures unrelated to Roslin's historic nature, and in fact, potentially weakens review to the point of a watered-down river snap. Now, in time of greater need, rather than bolster design review to help Roslin survive these pressures, you have mortally damaged its functionality. Because the primary purpose of design review is to maintain Roslin's historic integrity. If Roslin is maintained its historic nature, design review is functionally stressed. And that's just a piece of the, I would ask we should read that for children, but I told her I would read it.
So you guys have the full copy of the other part.
I want to remind the council briefly, Beersley was pivotal in the initial ordinance that was set out to prevent. Just in case, it'll should be. Okay, council concerns, objections? CD with the library function.
Yeah.
Ten AM to eight PM.
Was anybody going, able to go on the Domery tour today?
I did, we only got to the intake pond, we didn't get to, we drove up the hill so we could see where the comma, section four land was, but we didn't actually get on the ground there, because we kind of ran out of time and the concerns about if we could find the right road. So, they took a lot of pictures, you know, for TNC's purposes, in terms of kind of just seeing pictures, seeing what it's like, being able to capture images that they can use for, you know, promotion, basically.
Treasure.
So, yeah, I mean, and it's just informational, but, yeah.
Cool.
So, nothing new really there, but it was interesting to see. And to actually get up high on elevation and look out, and then think about what the map is like, again, sort of that, on the ground versus on the map, seeing how it fits the other, so.
So we had that meeting with Janin the last, two weeks ago?
Yes, and then this Friday, I'm meeting with city's treasurer, and then Tiffany from TNC, who is actually preparing the application. Yeah, so we're gonna look at the Eagle computer process, and just kind of work on the paperwork side of it.
Did you get any of your questions answered that you had?
Yeah, so I had, I still have one major concern that I just keep thinking about nonstop is, uh, so we will be looking at buying this or purchasing this land with all the values connected with it at the time. And then after the purchase, all those values will be stripped away from the land.
It'll be conservation value based.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's really not a way around that as far as I can tell.
That's about watershed protection.
That's, yeah.
Well, yeah, but, but my big concern too is ten years down the road, if we are maxed out and we are, our budget's still the same, what can we do? We can't do that, we can't manage that land. And so we can't tie ourselves without an exit plan.
So you, you're thinking we need an exit plan to avoid protecting the watershed?
Possibly, yeah. If it's, if it's drilling a well next to the, next to the bridge and getting rid of the two miles that are on private land in San Acadia.
You know it's impossible to drill a well next to the river. You know that's impossible.
But.
It's totally legal, one thing.
Well, let's just say it's, it is our watershed. We're spending over a million dollar, I know, we're spending a million dollars over this grant process. Maybe there's other things we need to look at as a city that can benefit our water just as good as spending a million dollars or a million plus than owning the land. So we can't stress our.
If that would be?
Well, that's what we have to put our thinking against, that's why we're voted here. It's a thinking of these alternatives.
Property ownership is the only way to protect that watershed.
Well, that, that is definitely one opinion from the council members. But I think we really need to look at it because we can't strap our citizens, again, our revenues are horrible and we're about to look at purchasing a bunch of land that's worth nothing. And what is our exit plan?
It's not worth nothing, it's worth the watershed. It's priceless.
Okay. But to the citizens of Roslyn, if we have no money, it's worth nothing to sell.
We have an easy, easy plan. Fifty cents or seventy cents increase on the water bill will pay in a sustainable, predictable and certain way into the future for this purchase.
Okay, but we, you're asking to up our water, which we've upped our water a lot and that perception towards people and our residents is going to be a, is going to be a different one, I think, so.
For protection of the watershed, people will.
But no, it's not just protection of the watershed because there's four corners on this, on this map and we only need that one corner. There are, and a, and a comma on top. There's a lot of land that I don't think we really need, but.
But I think that a big issue that TNC is posing in the consideration of why it's necessary is fire. And that the pond is uphill in the direction of fire.
Is the fact that your family is involved in real estate development, why are you asking this question?
You're crazy on that. That is way out of line. And that is, yeah, I know, that is way out of line.
We're a long ways from.
God, don't go personal on me, okay?
Just ask.
No, that's, that's honestly.